Thank you.
Five thirty, Mayor.
Thank you so much.
Nine in the struggle of towns like it talks. Okay, we waited him there, just one second.
Congress meeting to order the Oak Hill City Council for April tenth. The clerk will call the roll.
Mayor Daniel White.
Here.
Councilman Clark, I'm Oxley. Board one, councilmember Diana Janey here, Krista Hodges. David Perry.
Here.
Members, Steve Hazel.
I understand Mr. Hazel is supposed to join us virtually, correct? So you might want to hear that on.
No one's asked.
No one's asked.
Carl Smallwood.
Here.
And beneath his guts.
Here. Coram, Madam Clerk. The invocation tonight will be offered by Bishop Sam Callaway of the Spirit and Truth Ministries on Main Street Oak Hill, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Benitez Jackson.
Father, we thank you and bless you and honor you for the life and the love of this city. Father, we thank you that we have a councilor who has been sold too before they make any decision. We thank you. Pray Father in the name of Jesus, to let your hand on the city, make it your city, but be your citizens. Pray Father that everything done in this meeting tonight bring glory to your name.
Amen.
I bless the religions who live on the United States of America. It's really holy, which is banned from making under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Mayor unanimous consent to address the council and mayor without objection. Mayor, I would like to propose that you as the mayor draft a letter to go to Pastor Greg Hurley, speaking to the Messiah presentation that was given three nights in a row at the Solid Rock Church, where there were over a thousand attended each night. Councilman Janey was there as well, one of the nights I was there. And I think, one, it speaks well that this was projected and presented within the boundaries of our city. And it was well attended. And I think it speaks to the majority of this council in terms of our, our belief as, as our prayer said this morning, the council looks for direction from above. So I'd like to propose that the mayor be authorized to draft a letter on our behalf. Mr. Perry, that has already been done. Okay, secondly, I would like to propose that we draft a letter to Bishop Sam Callaway, who is here tonight, not by design, our pastor says nothing is coincidence, it's all God directed or God moment. We know Pastor Hicks was to have been here, but Bishop Sam had to replace him. And for informational purposes, first tonight, I have heard why bishop? Because I said, Sam, you're always pastoring me. He oversees sixteen ministers across the eastern part of the United States. So in terms of the prayer breakfasts that were held by the Brethren Church, the Church of God, the Methodist Church, and the fourth one was four churches, oh, Spirit and Truth Ministries. I'd like to see the bishop get a letter where the council again expresses their appreciation for this being done during Holy Week. And they were well attended, and if you didn't come, you missed one heck of a breakfast. So if the mayor would be doing that, Ms. Janey, I'll take your second if you would.
Mr. Have moved and seconded.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Councilman has already been done.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes. Thanks to the clerk.
And I had further asked that, that the Economic Development Coordinator see if she could do anything in conjunction with Greg Hurley, Pastor Hurley, to place this on our website if it's legal in terms of the future, because it does bring people into the city early, especially when you line up five thirty and you had food trucks and stuff with out there. So if the city manager would check on that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. We now move into the Spirit of Oak Hill Award Presentations. The city council a year or so ago established a Spirit of Oak Hill Award to honor people who go beyond their regular citizen duties and do things for the city, volunteer, help where needed. And the five members of that committee are Dwayne Hopkins, Krista Hodges, Tim Jordan, Debbie Bush, and the mayor. And we have, we met, we had some really good nominations. The policy was to pick one person, one individual, and one organization in April and the other, and do it again in October. So for a year are presented. However, we had two individuals who were presented that they were so much, had so much in common, had done so much, it was almost impossible to pick one over the other. So the committee decided to pick two individuals this time and one organization. And their names are there. The individual award winner, one would be Randy Day, another award winner would be Steve Vanes, Dr. Vanes, and the organization award winner will be the River Valley Community Outreach. The first presentation will be to Randy Day from Tim Jordan, a member of the committee.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
These, this is the easiest committee in the world to be on because the mayor said the nominees, these are all outstanding citizens, outstanding volunteers, and they're all people that, that obviously, when you, when you see the names there, if you've been around Oak Hill at all, you know that, that these are such deserving individuals. Randy Day, I didn't even have to make any notes as far as Randy Day goes, because, you know, Randy's one of these people, you know, one of these behind the scenes people in a way, that is willing to do what needs to be done in order for things to keep running smoothly. He's, he's done this in his capacity, working for Fayette County Schools, and he's done it in his capacity as a volunteer all over town. Randy has, I mean, you name it, and he's done it. I mean, without, everybody knows the contribution Gary Harding and Linda Harding made for the Little League program for those decades. Randy Day was right there with it. I mean, I know, and we're talking decades, probably, I don't know, you graduated in what year? I shouldn't ask that. What year did you graduate? Seventy-six, okay. Well, I mean, for decades, for decades, Randy has been one of these people that, you know, when, when people show up at the Little League field and they see that the field's taken care of, everything's open, concession stands running, the uniforms are passed out. I mean, that doesn't just happen, you know, it's someone has to be there to do it. And it's, and it's not easy and it's not fun stuff, but Randy's always willing to do this kind of thing. He's coached, he's served on boards, he's, like I said, been down there, if there's games at five o'clock, he's been down there at three thirty getting things open, and people don't see that. He has been a volunteer at the high school level, he's been the timekeeper for, yes, he's been a timekeeper for how long? Yeah, how long? I don't know, since, since World War Two, probably. But, you know, and, you know, you just have to understand that the contribution he's made. At the middle school, he's worked for, for Mr. Perry, Mr. Smallwood for a number of years, kept things running, you know, like a clock there. But he's, he's been a volunteer as in terms of a coach, a board member. He's taken care, he's been a player agent, he's been the player managers, he's coached softball, minor league baseball, little league baseball, senior league. He's umpired countless games. And if anybody's ever done that, that's not a fun job either. And he's, he's always there to step up. And I, and I, when this award was, was conceived and, you know, we were talking about it, you know, we, we don't, we can't nominate anybody, but that is one of the names that popped in my head instantly. So I, I just can't tell you how proud I am to, to be able to, to present this to Randy Day. Page. Page. Mike Fox donated a brand new twenty-three Chevy Silverado, and she's out there to, she's gonna give it to you. The next, the next recipient equally is deserving is, is a, is a guy who's, if you've been involved with or been around Oak Hill, specifically Oak Hill Athletics for a number of years, you've known the contribution he's made in terms of being a contributor, a supporter, you know, one of these behind, behind the scenes guys. He's fed teams. He's provided, you know, resources and, and in terms of food and other resources for teams for, for, again, for decades. If you look at any kind of older Oak Hill High School or even Collins High School memorabilia, anywhere that someone can buy an ad, which means they're supporting the teams, Steve's Dairy Queen's gonna be on anything you find, it's a seat cushion, or if it's a football, or your basket, it's gonna be the basketballs they throw out. You know, they're, his name's on, on all of those, because he, he's been willing to step up and, and and provide resources for the kids of this town in terms of athletics and so forth. And as he was nominated, and I want to say Mike Fox nominated Randy Day, and Charles Smallwood and Cheryl Jackson nominated Dr. Steve Vanes. And again, both, both were just such strong, strong nominees that we, we had to recognize both of them. Dr. Vanes and Cheryl was telling me before we got started, she said, in, in true Spirit of Oak Hill form, Dr. Vanes is at a baseball game at Wyoming East, his, his grand, his grandson's play now. So, and I talked to his daughter about three o'clock, and she said, he's stubborn, he's not coming, he's going to the baseball game. And I said, that's, that's fine, that's where, that's, you know, that's where he needs to be. So Cheryl Jackson graciously agreed to accept this award, and she had a couple of things to say for Dr. Steve Vanes.
We have conversations on the regular about the athletic at Oak Hill High School. Even when I was a cheerleader there, they fed us. I, I could, my boys played and, and my, his daughter, I was the cheerleading coach, and we just loved him. And he told me a story today, and I said that I would tell the story about when Coach Lilly coached the boys. He told me that, he would, he started out giving them milkshakes. He said, and every now and then, Coach Lilly would call him and say, hey, hey, this can be the show. And that meant he'd bring those milkshakes, and he said he would line every one of the players on the bleachers. And while they were drinking their milkshakes, he gave them a shake now. And food, right, I mean, the food would feed someone that he was loving. So he's always here for us, and I appreciate you guys, and thank you, we'll be happy to see you.
Mayor, unanimous consent that Ms. Katie Hayes be allowed to make some remarks at the end, I'm sorry. Without objection, at the end of this presentation, at the administrator at Oak Hill High School. All right.
Nothing like putting me on the spot, Mr. Perry. I do want to say that we were trying to track when Dr. Vane started with his contributions, and we did take it all the way back to Jim Lilly. And when she says they fed the team, I'm not talking about small stuff. When I was a cheerleader in nineteen eighty-nine, it was a steakhouse after every away game. And it was the team and the cheerleaders and Coach Lilly there with, with Steve always in the background. And I think that's something that he should be commended for as well, just like he is today, he's in the background. I don't know that he would have come up here, even if there wasn't a ballgame. But I think it's people like that who keep our community going and keep our schools strong, and we sure, we surely can't do it without them. So on behalf of Oak Hill High School, special thanks to Dr. Steve Vanes and his family.
Thank you. Our next presentation is by a member of the Spirit of Oak Hill Award Selection Committee, Dwayne Hopkins, and he's going to present it to the River Valley Community Outreach.
I'll try to keep mine short and sweet. So the new, the River Valley Outreach, they're located behind the old, the McDonaldton Oak Hill and the old Walmart building. I don't know how many of you guys know about them, but they've been here for the last three years serving our community. They've served thousands of people with building supplies, building materials, accessories, stoves, washing machines, dryers, at real discounted prices. And it's not, it's not trash stuff, it's not used things, they're brand new things. And I'll call them up here to let them tell you a little bit more about them.
So we are River Valley Community Outreach Center. Me and my husband run the nonprofit organization. We are a Christian organization, and basically, we believe that God provides us with these building materials in order to help our community, and we hope with your continued support that we will be able to.
Mayor, at this time, I'd like to ask that a picture be taken with the high school honorees or Spirit Award winners, along with anyone that is here with them, representing or here on behalf of Randy and Dr. Vanes. Not to take up time, but Ms. Janey's allocated me only five minutes tonight. Without objection, all right. If everyone wants to show up here and just get their picture made who won those awards, Randy Day. I think Mr. Jackson, Councilman Jackson ought to be there since he's one of the coaches. And if any committee members are here, Councilman, Mayor, you may want to get in that picture. Tim Jordan. Mr. Hopkins. Now who has a camera?
All right, on three, one, two, three, one more, do you sure to? One, two, three, all right.
Good job, thank you.
Do you have a thing?
Thank you.
Don't forget.
That's okay.
Now brings us to the Generations Health and Wellness Presentation by Frida, Frida Philippeck and Annie Pease.
Hi, everybody, I'm Frida, and this is Annie. We've been business partners for a few years and friends for a whole lot longer. We, we joined the community about a year and a half ago when we opened up Generations Health and Wellness on Central Avenue. We love this community, we love the people that we are honored to serve, and we love what we get to do every day. It's not really work when you get to come in each day and do something that you love. We, I feel so nervous to be up here, so I have to apologize, I'm not, I'm not much of a public speaker. But we are just a woman, a woman-owned business, and we have recently been able to expand some of our services that we offer. And so, of course, Generations Health and Wellness is a multi-specialty clinic. And, but what we're most excited about, the new, the new divisions is our families, Generations Family Services Division, which is a, a division where we are able to provide socially necessary services for children who have been removed from their homes, whether it's because of, just for any reason, we work closely with the HHR, and we facilitate the parents, with the parents to try to help that reunificate those children with their families, if that's able to be done. So we will go into the homes and we will teach life skills, we will do parenting classes, supervised visits, life skills. And so we, so we are expanding that division. Well, what that has done is that has caused us to outgrow our little building that we're in. And, and we want to be able to add some rooms for, you know, for example, if a family has lost their children and their children are not allowed to be in the homes with their parents, maybe they can have a visit, a good visit at our facility that is set up like a, a living room where they can, you know, be able to play and be monitored while they're supervised, while they're getting to, to play with their kids. This, this service is necessary because it, it helps lower the state's costs with, you know, foster, foster care expenses, and it allows us to work within the communities that we service. Where we operate in several different counties for the family services, but it, it keeps us kind of in the area, the biggest area that we service. In addition to that, we also have just been granted a waiver for our behavioral health license, which means we can offer a lot of services as far as mental health counseling and different types of counseling. And we would like to be able to offer some additional things there, too. So I think we just felt it was necessary. We've been here a little while, and we haven't really made it out into the community yet to get to introduce ourselves or talk to people. And, but we're small business owners, and we are just trying to keep it going, you know? So we've been working, 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 but now it's time, we wanted to get out and kind of meet everybody, introduce ourselves. And, you know, we just wanted to know if you guys had any questions or anything about us. We are probably going to look at move, like I said, moving locations, because we're gonna need more space for the other, the other things that we offer.
I think it's nice to know that you're there, I wasn't aware of that, but that's, that's a much needed service. Thank you.
Thank you.
I met with Philippeck and Ms. Peace a week or so ago, and listened to them at, at length as to the programs that they are carrying out there on, on Central Avenue. If you don't know which building it is, it's a white building right across from the dog park, next to the Presbyterian Church, and between the Presbyterian and the Brethren Churches, you know which building it is. And I, I listened to them at, at length as to all the really good programs that they are doing and propose to do in the future. And they even made this comment, they're from Beckley, but they may look at coming to Oak Hill, which I think is a good idea.
Beautiful.
Any questions? Thank you both very much, and we wish you the greatest success. And if the city council can help in any way, I'm sure they will.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Which brings us to the reading and the approval of the minutes, is there a motion? Mayor, I move that the minutes be accepted as having been presented by the council prior to. Second, properly moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing now, we vote the motion, all is in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is agreed to. Which now brings us to the treasurer's report, is there a motion regarding yet? Mayor, I'm proved that we received the treasurer's report as having been read and presented. Properly moved and seconded, the report being accepted as presented, any discussion? Hearing now, we vote the motion.
Hearing now, we vote the motion, all is in favor, signify saying aye. Those opposed? The motion is agreed to, which brings us to the to Madam Clerk, any correspondence?
No, sir.
No correspondence from the from anyone to the city. To the city manager, I was received that letter today. Was that correspondence regarding those citations that someone sent as is that you gave? It's not correspond to the city itself?
No.
All right. Which now brings us to citizens' comments. Bill Hannabas.
I was denied to speak during the last meeting of council. I wish to speak in opposition of the charter amendment, which brings politics into the hiring and firing process of the city. The city manager is much less likely to hire political cronies than elected politicians. I urge all residents to vote no on the charter amendments, which will be on the ballot. Denying my right to speak at the special meeting on March of 28th was underhanded, politically motivated, and illegal. That action violated ordinance 2.02.010. Shame on you. It was almost comical to watch Mr. Perry and Mayor Wright scrambling to prevent a citizen from making public comment.
Mayor, point of order, our protocol, mayor, point of order.
You're not going to make me.
You're not going to disrupt this meeting either.
You'll have to.
You had your say after the meeting. Mayor, point of order, our protocol calls that names not be used in presentations.
That's my First Amendment right, and I'm not going to be quiet.
Mayor.
So to further my comment.
Mayor.
The the mayor.
I hate to see a Jones situation, but. Mayor, I'd ask your ruling on the point of order.
Mr. Hannabas, using names, personal comments, I think are not appropriate for this presentation.
And where does it say that?
I think you know that, you are mayor.
No, sir, it does not say that.
It does.
That is my First Amendment right, and it does not say that. There is not an adopted.
I'm ruling that you that it does.
Okay. Okay, well, let me go on. It gets better.
Go ahead.
And I quoted the ordinance, it was in violation. And by the way, that didn't that interruption, that rude interruption did not count against my three minutes. It was it took longer to prevent the public comment than the three minute public comment. To put this wrongdoing in perspective, I reference a speech from a past mayor. He spoke of duty, the duty of city administrators, council, and finally, the mayor. He said the mayor's duty was to preside at all meetings of council and that it sounded very simple, but it was of the utmost importance. I'll read the last part of that speech. Webster Dictionary defines preside to guard, to sit at the head. Never in this chamber will a voice be dampened. Never in this chamber will a member of council have a reasonable fear to cast a yes or a no vote. When a voice is a lone voice, when a vote is a lone vote, find courage that I preside, find courage that I guard you, find courage that I sit at the head, for that is the duty of the mayor of Oak Hill. Now, fast forward to today. That was my speech from years ago as an incoming mayor. And after speaking and leaving those words, I find it ironic that I was denied as a resident to speak in this chamber. What has happened? What went wrong? When did it go wrong? How did this city government trade virtue and duty for arrogance, self-righteousness, and politics? What can we do to correct that? I didn't appreciate being interrupted.
Mr. Alashar.
Thank you, the seat, for allowing me to speak. I'm just kind of coming after what Bill I've said about the charters being changed. I think it's a shame that you all is putting them all together on the ballot and having the city and the voters to look at that. And it just reminds me so much of Congress. They had so many things in five bills, 20,000 pages, and they want you to vote on it overnight. And that's the same thing here. You've got all these charters wanting to be changed, you put them all together and ask the citizens, vote here, vote on, yes, on the charter change, not knowing individually what one's going to be, not unless you put it on the ballot. And and I think it's a shame, I hope the city of Oak Hill, the people, the citizens see that's what's going on. It's it's because certain members of the council wants to get their hands on the power to hire whoever they want and not allow the city manager or the the head department knowing who they need, basically the head department, and leaving it up to council, say, well, we, yeah, he may be good operator, she may be doing something good, but no, we don't want this. And it's a shame, it's disgusting, really, to me. And another thing is about the I was wanting to ask individually, and Mr. Perry seems to be objective of that, but I'm going to do it. I want to know that the handout that we get on the guidelines of this, on the guidelines, Mr. Jackson has ever been adopted. It's the guidelines that the they're wanting to go by. On special number three, I've sent I've sent a letter to the edict committee and they agreed that, you know, that you shouldn't name his by name, but they also said it's in a territory that will suppress the First Amendment law. And so that's. So, no, I'm I'm asking, Mr. Smallwood, has it been adopted? Okay. Ms. Janey has been adopted. Mr. Perry, has it been adopted?
In response to your question, Mr. Foul answered it after you had made your presentation last month, and he indicates that it is not necessary that it be adopted by the full council, that the mayor has the standing in which to make this appropriate. And if that would satisfy, I would ask that the next meeting it be placed on the agenda for adoption.
Well.
But it isn't legally necessary, Mayor.
Okay, that brings it up to another point. In 2008, you're adopted, the city adopted, where I signed up twice to be able to speak twice on different subjects tonight. The city council adopted that end of where I could use three minutes to speak on BBNT Bank or whatever, and then three minutes to speak on this. And that's what I intend to do tonight. After my three minutes is up on this, which is up now.
All right, Mr. Alashar, you now want to talk about the bank?
Yes, sir. In the past, a couple of meetings ago, we had Thresher, I think, up speaking about the the great job that they're going to do down at City Park. And absolutely outstanding, I think. But no, no time has the council members talked about Chapman with the BBNT Bank. We'd like to have, the citizens would like to have information on that, what it's going to cost and everything before Election Day. And so far, we haven't heard anything. It's not, maybe it's going to come up in the, maybe may bring it up tonight. But I think we, citizens, have a right to know what the what the cost is going to be. Mr. Perry, I know you disagree, because you was all behind this thing. And but.
Mayor, in point of order, it seems that Mr. Alashar doesn't understand item number three, and I'd ask for a ruling that he not refer personally to individuals here in the room or around the council chambers.
So are.
Okay, so we'd like to know who also, they had us, they had a committee to put together, Mr. Mayor, and, you know, to go out and negotiate a contract, negotiate on purchasing the building. They met one time and and the person with the ownership of the building said it was it couldn't be a legal meeting because the other members, the people, owners weren't there. So they come back. And so we know that there's three or four other members that went out and negotiated and brought it back to council, said, we've got the, we've got the habits, we've got the habits. I don't think it should have been in the council members' position to go out and negotiate a contract on that or negotiate a a buying fee on it. I I just don't agree with that. Of course, it's neither here nor there, but my most concern is, my biggest concern is, why haven't we heard anything about the 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 cost it's going to be and to bring us building up to part where supposed to be set in, ready to hold meetings? And so, you know, but going back, well, I can't do that. Anyway, I appreciate your time and and everything. I really do hope citizens vote here. I really do hope you understand that if we vote to pass these charters, some of them don't make any difference at all. I don't care. But number 11 and number 12 on charter, I swear that they they can, these councils can get control of hiring people who they want to hire and and kind of bypass over top the city manager and whomever. They have the last say. They have the last say, the council does. And whether to reject it or accept it, I'm really praying that the city of Oak Hill, the citizens will look at this and say, we need to, we need to vote this down because the council does not need more power than what they already have, some members, that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Mayor. I would like to ask that the city clerk be authorized to research the minutes of all the meetings when discussion began about the bank, the number of public hearings, and what was published and what wasn't, and that started long before. And when the committee was authorized to negotiate and that those minutes be made available to the public and to Mr. Alashar.
All right, objection? All right. Now moves us to a minute from the minutes. July the 6th, 1903. The record, the recorder's report was accepted on the progress of the town hall that was being built at the time. Also, a report of J. H. Duncan on the distance to the Cobb Saloon was accepted. Apparently, if you had a saloons within two miles of Oak Hill, the city could move to have it torn down or had the license revoked. That's what the city did on that day. They passed that the recorder be instructed to notify the county court that the Cobb Saloon is is within the two mile limit, fact it's one is a little over 1.18 miles. And they either revoke the license or remove the saloon. Also, they went after P. H. Malone's saloon and said he was 1.18 miles and he needed to go. And J. H. Duncan, the mayor, resigned that day. After some hesitation, they accepted it, they accepted a vote of council and his brother, C. E. Duncan, offered to resign from the city council, and they rejected him. So he had to stay, but his brother could go. That was back in June, July the 6th, 1903, a pretty heavy meeting, apparently, in Oak Hill. Which now moves us to, I call the Public Meeting to Order. And I'm going to read the title. And then if there are any comments or questions from the public, an attorney is here dealing with that, his name is Mr. Cam Seacrest, and he will answer questions or explain it to you if you have any comments or questions. An ordinance authorizing the financing of additional costs of certain additions, betterments, and improvements to the sewage system of the city of Oak Hill, including, without limitations, upgrades to the Minden Road wastewater treatment plant of the city of Oak Hill through the acceptance by the city of funding assistance in an in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $500,000 through the West Virginia Clean Water SRF program, the ordinance. Now, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak or any questions? Mr. Seacrest is here to answer it. Madam Clerk, could you? Not Madam Clerk, but city manager, could you look at this and tell us roughly what this is will entail? It's 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 the language seems to be a little involved that the average person, I think, would look at it and try to figure out what it's saying as well as myself.
To what this.
Is all about.
This is for a project that we had in Minden and Oak Hill to expand our treatment plant when we took over the Arbuckle Public Service District. So we had a bond for these, and we have gone over the cost due to some, due to a lawsuit that we had. And so this money is being given to us by the DEP, the Department of Environmental Protection, that are giving us this money to finish up, so that we can finish up that project.
Mr. Seacrest, do you have any comments you want to make about it?
I thought that was an excellent summary. Basically, we'll pay the lion's share of the settlement amount. The sanitary boards are already paid 136,000. This additional 500,000 will be the final payment on that settlement agreement. And as the city manager mentioned, it's basically a principal forgiveness loan, so the city will not have to repay this 500,000.
Thank you.
Any questions from council or?
Questions from council or public?
Mayor, comment on length of time, Councilman Janey. The city manager has been in contact alone himself with Marie Pressioso. A meeting has yet to be set, and Miss Pressioso has indicated that perhaps additional funds will be made available to underwrite the cost of this on behalf of the cities. Counsel, I think you know Marie and her. And hopefully, that will come to fruition. I commend the city manager for that contact or willingness to do that. I move that the ordinance authorizing the finance of additional costs of certain additions, betterments, improvements to the sewage system of the city of Oak Hill, including, without limitations, upgrade to the Minden Road water treatment plant of the city of Oak Hill through the acceptance by the city of the funding assistance in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed 500,000 through the West Virginia Clean Water SRF program, the ordinance be accepted.
There a second? Properly moved and seconded, any more discussion? Hearing now, we vote the motion, all is in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is agreed to. Now, we're back out of the public hearing, back into regular meeting, and we're going to unfinished business. Consideration to give final approval of the ordinance and to the acceptance of the city of funding, you've already voted on that, haven't you? Voting, you already moved ahead there, already voted on that one. Moves us to A.
Mayor, I move consideration and final action on supplemental resolution supplementing and amending the orders described above relating to the funding assistance.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Properly moved and seconded, any discussion? Hey, are we putting A and B together, or is it just we got to do them both separate? You want them separated together?
I think they have to be separate.
Have to be separate, apparently. That's good, I'm good. Any discussion? Hearing now, we vote the motion, all is in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's agreed to. B, consideration of possible other actions relating to the funding assistance and/or the project being financed with the proceeds of the funding assistance.
I'm not aware of any additional actions required. That was there just in case something came up. The sanitary board met this morning, they approved the first requisition, disbursement of the money, so that's already been covered. So I don't know of any further action unless the council mayor or you, the council, have anything else on that particular matter.
The council's recommending no action at this time.
You've already acted upon the ordinance itself, and you adopted this supplemental resolution, those were the two action items I needed to move forward with the closing, which I have it on April the 25th, and I do not have anything under B. Thank you.
Thank you. So are we withdrawing B? Yeah, sounds like it. All right. So B is withdrawn. Two, Charter Ordinance Review Committee's recommendation to amend ordinance's second reading, Oak Hill Municipal Code 2.04, Mayor Reserve, Oak Hill Municipal Code 2.08, Point 10, copy and research fees, C, I'm going to the Municipal Code 2.10.01. one oh, point oh one oh, competitive bids required for construction facilities, publication of solicitation for sealed bids. Municipal Code two point one four, point oh one oh, police commissioner duties. O. H. M. C. Two point two oh, point one oh, recreation committee. O. H. M. C. Two point two oh, point oh two oh, beautification commission. O. H. M. C. Two point two oh, point three oh, museum commission. And O. H. M. C. Two point two oh, point oh zero, oh five zero amphitheater commission. And O. H. M. C. Two point two oh, point seven oh, White Oak Trail Committee. City, Madam City Manager, could you explain what those are doing there?
If I can see them. I can't remember.
Little small.
Oh, and the first one for the mayor, we just changed the article to match what our current code. We, when we got a new code, we had to renumber our ordinances. So that's what that was for. Number, the two point oh eight, copy and research fees. There were some fees that we're not allowed to charge any longer. So we've removed those. Competitive bids, we changed that to twenty five thousand. If it's for construction of facilities, which goes along with state code, but then we also raised the other competitive bid limit also to twenty five thousand so that we could buy things without going to bid if it's not in a constructive, construction progress to twenty five thousand. We removed police commissioner because we have, we do not have a police commissioner. We haven't had one for years. So we just removed that from our ordinance. For the recreation committee, we changed just one word, shall to may, same thing. All of those are changing, shall to may. And the same thing on down, the everything in that's shall to may, same thing for beautification committee. Museum commission. We, I thought we deleted that whole thing. I think that's what that is. We deleted the whole museum commission because we have not had one again for years. And then amphitheater commission is just some language shall to may so that it's not required, but it can be done. The White Oak Rail Committee, Rail Trail Committee, we took off representative of the Oak Hill Garden Club and the Oak Hill Lions Club since they are not active in Oak Hill or have not been attending the meetings, which we haven't had a rail trail committee meeting for a while either. So so and so that's shout to may also. Was that the last one? That's all.
Mayor, I move that we
Thank you.
approve A through I under item number two, recommendations for ordinance review from the ordinance committee to amend ordinances, A through I.
Second, properly moving second. Any more discussion? Hearing now we vote the motion. All those in favor, signify saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion's agreed to. Brings us to new business, a bid opening for the purchase of a twenty twenty three Polaris Ranger one thousand E. P. S. The Oak Hill Fire Department.
I have four bids to open. The first bid is from Suzuki on Robert Seabird Drive in Beckley. And the bid is twenty two thousand five hundred eighty four dollars and sixty cents. This one is from Gravely Polaris in Dunbar. And that bid is twenty thousand four seventy five seventy four. The third bid is from Lockards Incorporated in Flatwoods. And the bid from Lockards is twenty one thousand seven hundred ten dollars and eighty seven cents. And the final one is from Park Superstores in Clarksville. This is the hardest thing I've done all day. From open these envelopes.
I might make an issue of it.
And the bid from Park Superstore is twenty five thousand two ninety two sixty six.
Mayor, I move that we accept the bid from Gravely for twenty thousand four hundred seventy five dollars and cents were what, Madam?
Seventy four cents.
Seventy four cents.
And can we, can you also add to that up one review of the fire department committee?
That was going to be my question next when discussion was asked for.
Okay, yes.
So you want to go your motion one more time, Mr. Perry?
I move that we accept the bid from Gravely for twenty thousand four hundred seventy five dollars and seventy four cents. And at the time appropriate time, I have some questions on, under discussion.
Properly moving second. Any discussion?
That was part of the question I had. I didn't see the chief behind me slip in, I believe. So the, this will replace an existing vehicle, which will be transferred to Parkers and Recreation.
The, this piece of equipment was paid for by the membership of the fire department. Yeah, twenty years ago.
Twenty years old? The second question is, is the specs. I presume that when it was bid, it was present, it was bid with the specs part of the bid process.
Yes.
So really, I don't know that would be appropriate to have the bid reviewed since this one would have to presume that it was predicated on the specs.
But that's not always true. Sometimes they don't meet, sometimes it will not meet the specifications. The bid will not meet the specifications.
So who would that committee exist of? The chief and who else?
He, they have a committee at the fire department.
So if it doesn't meet the specs, then will it come back to council? Or approval of a second or a second bid?
I think we can go to the next lowest. If you, if you put that in your motion, that it's contingent upon that.
Well.
Since it was opened in a public meeting, it's will be used on fire levy money. So.
I already have my, my motion on the floor in a second. So I would suggest that we vote that motion and we accept another motion. Mayor, that's a suggestion.
All right, we've
Not to complicate things, but we want to be sure. We dotted the I and crossed.
That is easier.
All right, we have a motion that we accept the Gravely offer twenty thousand four hundred seventy five dollars and seventy four cents for the the Polaris Ranger. Well, now vote to motion. All those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's agreed to.
Mayor, I would move that the twenty thousand four hundred seventy five point seventy four be accepted if it meets the specs as reviewed by the fire department committee. And if it does not meet the specs, then they would go to second, third or fourth options.
You heard the motions. There a second? Properly moving second. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing now we vote the motion. All those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is agreed to. Which now moves us to the Oak Hill Police Department Emergency Hiring.
Before you have a recommendation from the Oak Hill Civil Service Commission to hire Samuel Metter Jasper Junior under the emergency hiring process allowed by civil service.
Mayor, I move that I hire Samuel Jasper Junior under the temporary provisions and also understanding chief can validate this. We're fortunate to get a young man that's already been through the academy, who has served as a police officer in this county, Mount Hope, and who wants to come back home. And as well, some point in time, he will have to take the civil service exam, correct, chief?
That does, the emergency hiring process starts the hiring process and ninety days to get that, get you all a list of three viable candidates and hopefully he'll be on it or on the top of it or at least on
So.
for you all to hire.
So once we take this action tonight, he'll be able to begin employment.
He will begin employment in the morning.
So I make that part of the motion. I move that we accept Samuel Metter Jasper Junior under temporary provision to begin his employment tomorrow morning as per the assignment of the chief of police of Oak Hill.
Properly moving second that the, under the emergency hiring process that Sam M. Jasper will be hired in that, in that position. Chief, I, I know Sam Jasper. He was a he was a student of mine to meet him and
Careful now.
Everybody was a student of yours.
I saw him not, I saw him a few months ago and he told me how old he was and I said, well, you're almost as old as I am now. I can't believe it. He, he's a, he's really a fine, a fine young man. And and he, I think he'd be quite an asset to the to the police department. He also lived on the same street that that I do for a while before he moved away. So I, I can vouch very strongly for Sam Jasper as a, as a hire. And I think it's a really good hire. And I think Oak Hill's fortunate to have him coming in here. So with that, any more discussion?
Be careful, Mayor, you'll be cute.
I gotta be careful.
Qualify for emergency hiring except because you're short staffed or?
We're, we're minus an officer. This is a trained certified officer who needs a job. We potentially are going to lose one, maybe two officers to another department probably within the next six months. I, I think it constitutes an emergency. I personally do.
Any more discussion? Hearing now we vote the motion. All those in favor, signify saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is agreed to, which brings us number five, consideration to approve one day nonprofit license to serve sangria at at Cinco de Mayo Dinner Celebration Event at St. Peter and Paul Catholic Church Cafeteria. Catholic Church, no Catholic School Cafeteria.
Tyler, will you bring up that document? This is a request from the Catholic school. Laura Kalani is asking, she, here she explains it. It's a Mexican themed dinner, which is a fundraiser from the school and they will sell tickets to include the food and the beverage and they would like to serve sangria at that function. It will be monitored by adult volunteers. So they're going to make sure that it's not, it's just a one day permit. And they will make sure that no one underage will partake and and that it will not leave the building. And there will be, there's no other alcoholic beverages that will be sold. They applied for this license and we're told that since it is in city limits that the city council has to approve this request.
So the Catholic school going to sell alcohol?
They're gonna sell.
Church.
They're gonna have
Church. Church school. Sounds better.
Well, it says it's a fundraiser for the school. And so it's a sangria. I'm have not partaken of one, but I understand that that has not just a small amount of alcohol.
So I would, I would ask, go ahead, nine. I'm sorry. Yes.
The city has to approve it because it's in city limits.
I'm not against it. I mean, I, I might go.
Just drink the communion wine.
Other organizations have come in front of us wanting to do alcohol as well. Have we denied? What are we going to do?
We gave it to one group.
Motorcycle, motorcycle.
Motorcycle group did it. Yes, they got it.
Mayor, I'm Was it the group at the meeting before last?
It was at last meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would the gentleman yield? I understand the group that was here last month has removed or reconsidered and will not be proposing alcohol at the amphitheater.
That was, that was the group from the amphitheater.
Right.
But last month, it was approved for bears and brews.
Yeah, but I said, I understand the amphitheater group are here tonight and then withdrawn there or withdrawn. The question I have, who does Ms. Kalani represent?
The Catholic school.
In what capacity?
I believe she's the president of their
PTA.
School board or
So.
Yeah, PTA.
So it's the PTA or whatever with the Catholic school that has at, that has signed the permit with the state.
Right, and they need a letter of support as we do for bears and brews for, to have this event.
And we did do this for the Holiday Lodge. I think the same thing.
We just asked for them to have, they already have
Temporary permit.
Yes, they had a temporary permit.
But this is within the church. Voted upon by their church board, sanctioned by their father, their priest.
Yes. Yes, they're having a dinner buffet, it says. And that's just to
Is there anyone here
With their
to represent this?
No, Laura is not, Laura Kalani is who I talked to.
I'd like to know why they feel this needs to be part of the dinner. And I'm like, Mr. Pardon?
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, I'm sure they can, they'll, I'm sure the price is more.
What's that? I've been to some weddings. You know. Will the chief be there with the assistant chief that night?
I'm sure there'll be families there, I think. I don't think it's going to be a drunken brawl.
Does the city manager have a recommendation?
I would recommend that you, that you approve the permit.
So moved.
Good a motion. Is there a second to approve?
Second.
Properly moving second to approve the, what the one day nonprofit license to St. Peter and Paul Catholic Church slash school. Is there any discussion?
Yes, it's only indoors. It'll be confined to their cafeteria. Or the gymnasium or whatever. Or the gymnasium or whatever is there on that. Yeah. Where they have their fish stand.
Move the previous question. It's been moved, the previous question. Well, now vote the motion. All those in favor, signal pop saying aye.
Aye.
What's the the clerk, the clerk, the clerk recall the role. I could not ascertain a vote on that one.
Word one, council members Diana Janey.
There you go. Remember, we're good Protestants.
David Perry.
Yes.
Word two, council member Steve Hazlett.
Yes.
Carl Smallwood.
Yes.
And beneath is Johnson.
Yes.
The A's have it.
Four to one. The motion's agreed to, four to one. She now moves us to item number six. Discussion and possible action on a West Virginia historic marker for Marion McQuade, founder of National Grandparents' Day. I asked that that be put on the agenda. And the type of marker I'm referring to is one of those highway markers that the state of West Virginia produces. It takes them about eleven months to get it in. We, we just finished putting up one for James Ellis out there in the, as you drive into Harlem Heights Park, there's a marker there for, for, for James Ellis. And I proposed this one for Marion McQuade, that she lived in Oak Hill. It isn't that, it is the founder of National Grandparents' Day. And I think it's fitting that we put up historic marker from the state. Of course, it probably will be until next year of this time and that we have a special presentation at that time to honor the work of Marion McQuade, who worked very tirelessly to bring that about. I think President Carter signed the final paperwork to make it a national holiday. All thanks to the hard, hard work for many, many years of Mrs. Marion McQuade. So that's why I proposed this and I hope that, that we can do this. I think it will look good. By the way, before we move on here, Madam City Manager, she was a student of mine.
Mary our party.
Mary McQuade was. She was, I knew her well. She was a very, she was a fine lady and worked very hard. I knew all the work she did. So.
Mayor, I move that the city manager herself be authorized to process through the West Virginia Historical Society. Mr. Smith, provide for a marker for Marion McQuade to be paid for at the price that the state charges to, for a site to be selected at a future point in time for erection.
Property moving second that we will establish and erect a West Virginia historic marker to honor Marion McQuade of Oak Hill, the founder of National Grandparents' Day. Is it, has it been a second? Yes, it's been a second. Any discussion? Hearing now, we vote the motion. All those in favor, signal pop saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion is agreed to. Number six. Now it brings us to department reports. You've had your report sent to you from the police department. Are any questions of the chief?
One statement. I would commend the chief. I've had, now had four officers do a little community relations with the wave. So I commend the chief that you have requested that this be done. It's good, good for people to feel comfortable with your department. I don't know whether they're recognizing my vehicle or they just have gotten into it. What I was afraid of, that's what, just the chief told me. That's seriously, I do. I thank you for that. Obviously, you said something too.
The, you have a report from the fire chief and any questions of him? Report from the city manager?
Whoa, whoa, fire chief.
Fire chief, alright.
I have requested for a couple of meetings now and have asked the city manager to do so also, a timetable to be presented to council for the construction or completion of construction or the addition of the fire station. And has Thrasher provided that yet, Madam Manager?
I, I have not requested that.
Does the chief have a timetable projected? Well, sure, that's what I. So, chief, I would ask again, you know, we got it from Chapman. Step by step, that either you or the chief get for counsel, a timetable, which as the chief's indicated, bid, construction or whatever has to take place between now and then. And if I recall, a major part of that discussion, chief, you were in that meeting, was that they would have a hoopla in terms of the presentation of what it was and hot dogs and so forth. And the Oak Hill band would be there, if I remember, in that committee. Yes. Now, again, I'd like to have a itemized or a line by line projection, realizing that's not, you know, for council to know where we are in case we're asked questions. From Thrasher.
Brings us to the city manager. Any, any questions in the city manager's report?
Excellent report. She's been very busy. And I've had an editorial, someone, I don't remember who I was talking to last week, said, we could not have made a better hire. That, that the meter was very open minded, very conscientious and very objective with the decisions and so forth that she would make. And I've always said, a fine Christian lady. So I would compliment her again. This was a person outside the city that made that comment.
I thought you were talking about me when I was saying that.
About you scripted it for me. So I would pass that. I think these people need to know when you're complimenting them on good job.
Thank you.
Brings us down to the report given to us by the Director of Economic Development, which you'll see right here. Looks like she's been extremely busy too.
Yes.
Single space and it's four pages.
I'd just like to ask of each, I know she sent out an email. Has everyone responded and set a date or time or opportunity to meet with her? And I wouldn't, you know, it's your decision whether you have or not, if you want to, would like to respond.
She is very.
I have met with her.
She's very interested. She's very interested in meeting with you. Hopefully she can be at the next council meeting, but she'd like to speak with each one of you and I think you'll be very impressed when you talk to her.
I think you made a good hire. It was very productive, the two hours I spent. I had to buy her lunch, but.
I had to trick her.
And I do know that there's been discussion that she will be in future meetings for council.
Yes.
And that also that once the new facility is occupied, she will have office hours available, not every day, to be determined by the city manager. Who matter of record made it very clear, the conditions or premise under which she was being employed and what relation she'd have with the city manager in terms of supervision. So I'd like for that to be sure that's in the minutes. Madam Clerk?
Her last name's quite interesting. It's a Basque name from the region of France and Spain. Those, they've been fighting for independence for a long time, but soon as I saw that, I thought it's quite, you rarely see a Basque name in Bay County, much less Oak Hill. It's I was impressed with the name itself. She now brings us to the code enforcement. Any questions there? Which brings us to MS four.
I just want to remind everyone that if you see anything going into streams that shouldn't be, if you please report that or anything going into our stormwater culverts. Please be aware of items like that. If, check your storm drains, make sure they're not going into our sewer. And that's all I have on MS four for tonight.
Which brings us to council comments. We'll start with word two.
I have one comment here. Your First Amendment rights versus procedures of meetings. Does First Amendment rights proceed or take over procedures of the council? I don't, I don't know exactly.
It'd be a question of Mr. File.
Mr. File, I guess.
And I think it depends on, you can't stop them from saying things, I don't think is first, I mean, according to the First Amendment.
You know.
But I'm not sure about the names.
Having served sixteen years in the legislature, I know that there is definitely acceptable protocol as established. And that personal references to individuals by name is prohibited according to the legislative rules. And this, so I would presume that the council would have the same development to do the same. And, and, and apparently with the city attorney, it's just Perry's paralegal opinion. With the city council or attorney having been here, who was aware of our protocols, who didn't say they could not be done, he only suggested after the issue was raised that they did not, and I'm repeating myself from a while ago, they did not have to be approved by the council. But that the mayor had the standing in which to present those. So if he looked at them so forth, but again, Councilman Smallwood, I would say that at this point may be prudent to get a legal opinion. And I think we heard the gentleman say that the Ethics Commission said that names could not, should not be used. But I don't, I know that it's acceptable in boards of educations, state boards of educations, the West Virginia Legislature, so I can't fathom any other interpretation. I mean, you can't go around saying anything about anybody you want.
But where do we get those procedures from? Like, did you, did you come up with those procedures or, I don't
No.
They just show up one day or they just been here for a while? Is that something we were talking a long time ago here? Or you just some, I'm just.
No.
Well, the, the freedom of speech is not absolute. You know, remember Oliver Wendell Holmes, a member of the Supreme Court, once said, you cannot run into a crowd at theater and have the right to scream out fire when there is none. You don't have that right as freedom of speech. That's a famous quote. The last meeting, that was on advice of city council. That wasn't, that wasn't, that was the attorney's interpretation before the meeting started. So it wasn't from, from my off, not from me or the city council, it was from the city attorney who made that statement to us.
Yeah, and I do think, I just think we have to be consistent in that we do that because we have let people stand up there and be raped.
Yeah.
Council members before. So.
But that, the, the discussion earlier tonight came from city attorney's opinion, not from mine last time.
Right, yes. But I
I think I'm talking about.
Because it's in our, yeah. Because that was, because it's in our ordinance. It's probably, I don't know, I'm not an attorney. I didn't even know it's in our ordinance.
Well, I think the point Ms. Smallwood's raised is a valid point. I respect Councilman Jackson's remarks and I think the two issues can be resolved on a, on an opinion from the attorney. And if we need to adopt, it would be council members prerogative to vote up or down at the next meeting. And I think I suggested that earlier.
I have it written down to send that to Mr. File.
But if we're gonna knee jerk to everything, that's all we're gonna get.
I don't think that's the case I'm talking about.
Oh, no, I'm not saying that, but I'm saying. Be careful, the slope, you start sliding down.
Alright, it's, any other comments from word two? We now move to word one. Ms. Janey?
Probably we will do that by social media and other things that don't cost any money. But we do have to publish our ballots in the paper. And then everybody's going to be getting a letter about the change of polling place. So that has information in it. So Rhonda has done a very good job handling all that and
Excellent.
Those letters are going out soon, I guess. That, that's required. There's a, a time required by the the Secretary of State that it can't be earlier than a certain day. And so it has to be close to the time of the election.
Barry?
I've got about four pages to go. In terms of the questions that Ms. Janey asked, I, I would like to indicate Rhonda did an excellent job with a release on the election and so forth early on that was in the Becky paper. Secondly, I would like to have this document entered into the minutes, which clearly comes from the Secretary of State's office. Their attorney, Mr. Deeks, 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 who indicates all that has to be on the ballot is the proposed language, not old language, but the proposed language. So, so this is documentation for your benefit, Madam Clerk, that came through the county clerk.
Without objection. So ordered.
Also, I'd like to indicate the minutes reflect, early on, we heard it said, why were all these put together? Why were they all on the ballot? And that's because we adhere to the process, the requirements in terms of anyone objected to them, they had to go on the ballot. We had an objection from a resident that had objected to every, all thirteen of them. Is that correct, Madam Manager? Which means we had no choice but to put all thirteen on the ballot. So the statement was made, why did you all do them all together? Simply because it was requested by a citizen of this city? So I'd like for those, that comment also be ordered, entered in precisely. The other thing I would make again is a comment about the hiring process. Obviously, the change that was proposed is a cooperative process. And I'm not sure it's understood, that is practiced by the county boards of education, by the state board of education, by colleges and universities. And you talking about politics. We saw that when a city manager and a councilman traded position for an unadvertised position. If that wasn't politics, I ain't never heard of anything. So, you know, it does require that the department heads, it doesn't diminish, that the city manager interview recommend with council approval. And again, our whole government in Washington, Charleston, is predicated on a checks and balance system. This simply sets a checks and balance, which allows council members to review, look at, not dictate. And I guarantee you, politics can enter into the process with one individual more than it can with seven of us. I'd hate to think we would collaborate politically on the hire for or against an individual. And a council member may know something that was not represented on the, on the resume or application, which would assist the knowledge ascertained from the department heads or city manager. So personally, not to use this seat for politics, as we're being accused, I would advocate strongly for a checks and balance system on everything we do. And I'd like for those comments to be entered into the minutes just as well. Uh, the other thing is, uh. Have we looked at the facility out next to, to, uh, we talked about it. Chief may remember, uh, next to the old sport or audit express in terms of it, the fire.
Yeah, on, no, we have not. Um, I have, I need to talk to the chief about that and see if it's still under investigation or where that is in the process.
Pardon? Yeah, yeah, I knew that. There, I understand at the meeting in Mendon, there was discussion about possible buyouts. Uh, and I know, I believe, I suspect that the monies that were discussed cannot be used. I think we got that in your reports, correct?
Be used, that money cannot be used for buyouts.
And I know, I think, I believe that if any information is available to that Senator. Capito's office has been contacted about possible earmarks through, I believe it's the EPA, no. Uh, EPA or, uh, National, what is it? That those monies would have to be forthcoming from there for buyouts. And a name has been given who kinda oversaw the buyouts in Kill Site and Mount Hope. As a resource that the city manager and the council would consider that, particularly since, and if I'm in error, correct me. Uh, Thrasher has indicated there's very little that can be done to stop the flood, flood, flood control in Mendon. Other than a dam, much like the Hoover, the head of the holler, so to speak. Uh, so I, I would hope that council would advocate, uh. Support city manager if she chooses to look for a means to assist those people with buyouts. And I know the buyouts in Mount Hope, Kill Site, Lynn Jean were based on fair market value plus thirty thousand dollars. So it was pretty lucrative really, but.
We will be talking about that at our sanitary board meeting on Wednesday at ten o'clock. Um, some of the. The region for development council has some information on that, or they're working on gathering information. So if anyone wants to attend that meeting, we will talk more about that.
I also would like to recommend that this, or I'll make a motion. Uh, that the council. Uh, request that the zoning appeals board. Uh, hear a request for a variance under variance to the process. On behalf of a variance that was requested in good faith on the third seventeen of twenty one. And the zoning officer at that time based his. Uh, process to the individual on what he had as matter of record. Now, the ordinance changed and he had it in book form and didn't have the new ordinance. Uh, and that's for a storage yard and not a junkyard. Uh, but I think this individual has done an excellent job in the city of Oak Hill. With what he's done with businesses and what he does daily in terms of street cleaning. And I don't know of any, any, I don't, and you guys can inform me. Of any businessman that has done any more to make improvements on businesses and facilities. Which he's occupied. Now, guarantee you, at times he stumbled maybe on an appropriate permit or so forth. But has always complied and been cooperative, as I understand. So again, I'd like to add, make a motion that council send a letter, uh, to the chairman and the zoning officer. That they proceed, uh, with a variance request, uh, under B two.
I think that will leave more room for that to be appealed and questioned. Uh, we have notified him in plenty of time and, and the advertisement now says a variance. And or, uh, a use permit, so he can be also, he can ask for the variance, which is. No different really than the use.
And that's what I'm suggesting.
Yes, I don't think it requires action of council.
No, I'm, and I'm, I know that we can't take action, but I'm just suggesting.
I don't think that it's going, they're gonna have a hearing before zone, before the.
So that will proceed.
Yes.
So who would have the hearing? Would be zoning?
The zoning, Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay, oh, we gotta go to appeals.
It's a, it's a situation that is, um. Gary incorrectly told someone that he could ask for a use permit in B two, in zone B two. And he cannot, it's zone B three that can hold a storage yard. Um, so he can ask for a variance to the ort- or to that zone.
Then you have to go back.
Right.
Yeah, cause I thought.
It's my understanding.
We took care of that.
Pardon?
I thought we.
It was my understanding that had been taken care of three years ago.
Yeah, cause I'm on the planning zoning board. I thought we took care of that.
Now, whether there's documentation to that or not, it's also my understanding that Steve Moss corresponded. Either verbally or written to the individual, uh, that it was okay.
Yeah, I thought we.
In terms of fifteen point oh eight oh three three oh, powers and duty of the Board of Zoning Appeals. So I have the authority following powers and duties authorize exception to the district rules and regulations. Only in the classes of cases or in particular situations as specified in the zoning title. Also, they can hear and decide conditional uses of the zoning title. Upon which the board is required to act under the zoning title. My understanding is a lot of discussion today in this building from different individuals relevant to this. Uh, apart from maybe, uh, the secretary and yourself and those persons who were present. But if you feel that, if you feel this is gonna occur, uh, I will withdraw my intent for a motion.
Conversation I had was that it was going to occur.
Okay, well, and, and I said, if, if, if you can make it happen.
Unless they changed it afterwards, that.
Well, should I proceed with my motion or not, Mayor City Manager? Then I will proceed with my motion, uh, cause we're uncertain at this point. It seems to be some uncertainty as to whether the Board of Zoning Appeals will, will proceed.
So you are, you made the motion.
I made the motion.
I'll second it.
Proper movement, seconding this session.
Mr. Willis, DTE, has asked to be permitted to store, um. Junk cars and wrecked cars out at his lot across from Walgreens for thirty days. Right now, the ordinance only allows five days. And he is asked, he is asking for a use permit to store those there for thirty days. The use permit is not allowed in zone B two. It's only allowed in B three and industrial. So he will have to apply for a variance to that ruling.
Under B two, correct?
Under B, to have it under B two. It's, no, it has to be gone. It has to be rotated every thirty days. That he has to move it out. After thirty days, the vehicle has to be gone. And it can't be gone for a day and brought back. It has to be gone. And now I don't know, do you think he, you think he's already applied for that?
I don't know if he's applied, but I know that, I just remember when I first got on the zoning board, I thought we took care of that. I thought we kind of put that to rest that he could, that he could do that.
Um, that's my understanding too.
Yeah, I, I thought we, I'm pretty sure we did, but I mean, I'm not, I mean, I have to go back and look at the minutes, but I, unless it's not in the minute.
We don't have any record of that.
But I thought we did and I.
You know, by leave of the committee, uh, and I had guarded very carefully not to make any public comments. Which may come back on the individual or his business, which may affect it. Uh, by unanimous consent, if he would like to speak, I would ask that he be allowed to speak for one minute.
Without objection.
I don't, you know, maybe the insurance for a holy month, thirty days. You know, insurance purpose.
The insurance doesn't matter. That's the rule. I mean, that's.
It's also my understanding that it may be police vehicle, or, um, vehicles impounded there or kept during an investigation. Which may exceed thirty days.
Well, I, and I thought that those also could be moved as long as they were.
And I hear, I hear you have a little resistance to what we're doing, but.
Well, I'm just saying, it's the, I mean.
Can we, can we not talk to Gary Harding? I mean, Gary Harding, no?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I thought we did.
Gary said that it has not been done.
Okay.
Now, Mr., uh, what's his name?
I thought we did.
He was chairman.
Moss.
Moss, Mr. Moss said it was done.
I'm, I'm pretty sure.
So, and, and whether there's any minutes or not, I don't know. The, the other thing is this. Uh, you know, what is the, I would say that we're better off with a variance than him applying to go industrial. Cause industrial would allow a junkyard and we don't want a junkyard on Main Street.
And even with this, it has to be fenced.
Yes, yes. And what I would like to ask, what is the difference in what is being done? On oil than what Prudence is being, that is done on Main Street? What's the difference? There's more cars out there than this guy ever has and. You know, what's, what's the difference?
Probably the zoning.
And I know there was discussion there and Mr. Harding worked with Prudence and they erected a fence. Also, I also would, pardon?
I said that's, is an eyesore, that they, there is an issue there too.
But there was a fence erected, right?
Well, it has to be a fence.
Yeah, in the back, yes, you're correct. So I'm just saying, what's the difference? It's gone untouched and un. The, the other thing, I guess, is, uh, you know, as the city managers indicated. Mr. Harding, in good faith, used the, the, the document and the regulation manual that he had. Which did not have the new regulations in it. And I hope this doesn't reflect on Mr. Harding and his performance, but, uh, you know, I think he's done an able job, admirable job. And like I said, that's dated thirteen, seven, twenty one, and the business owner complied in good faith with. Uh, what he was told. Uh, so, you know.
He was told that in twenty one?
Third seventeen of twenty one. That's on the, that's on Mr. Harding's, uh, document that he used. The, the regulations which were not, which had been changed after that.
No, they were told in, they were changed in twenty twenty. The regulations were changed.
His regulation is dated third seventeen of twenty one. I have a copy of that if you'd like to see it.
Well, I don't know. He had the wrong, that may be the day he printed it.
Well, I don't know, but anyway, I read fifteen oh eight oh three oh, which authorizes the bill, zoning building commission. To make those variances under B and C. And I'd be happy to provide council members with this if you'd like to have it. So I have due to some question as to whether they will or will not allow it to proceed. I've made my motion and it's been seconded and I call for the question, uh, by roll call.
Go ahead.
I think we're talking about up, I don't think we're talking about behind the cleaners, are we?
Yes, yes.
But the city man, the city manager's indicated would have to be fenced. Blind fence, not a plainly fence or anything.
He could fence in, yes, he, he would just have to fence in that area. Not, it wouldn't bother him.
Mayor, I've moved the previous question. There's been opportunity for discussion, uh.
Quite, yes, the question.
All parties here, including the city manager.
Yes, the clerk will call the roll.
Diana Janey.
No.
It's to go, it's to let it go to. David Perry.
Yes.
Word two, council members, Steve Hazlett.
Yes.
Charles Smallwood.
Yes.
And Benitez Jackson.
Uh, yes.
Motion's agreed to by unanimous vote. Mayor, I'd ask that this, that the clerk forward that motion or request to the zoning board, chairman and to Mr. Harding.
So, or. Future agenda items? Oh, I have a comment or two, just, just one other thing.
You got, I'd like to ask that the, in terms of what we, what I asked earlier about the clerk. To research all the past dates and times that there was discussion held on the bank purchase. That this document be entered into the minutes, which outlines March eighth twenty one. Uh, we go, all the way through March fourteenth of twenty two. Uh, meetings and conversations that were held relevant to the bank. And in addition to whatever, uh, the clerk could come up with. And I'd also ask that if any council member, uh, has minutes, that they'd like to make it easier on Rhonda. Uh, give those to her as well. Other than that, right, Ms. Janey, I've allotted, I've used my allotted time you gave me prior to the meeting. Thank you.
I only have, uh, three comments. One, I, I think that we need to, um. Start aggressively working on the veterans monument. We started on it. And unfortunately, one of the members has been, has been ill for some time. I, I think that we need to, uh, pick up and move on with that to some degree. And I think maybe a call, the meeting, a call of the members of the board into a meeting and see where we are. Let them give us the lay of the land as to where it is right now, cause I think that, uh, it's extremely necessary and pertinent. And, and something that we need to have done some time ago was to establish a memorial to the veterans in this area who served this country. So if, if you could please, Madam City Manager, see if the, the members of that committee could get together.
Would the mayor yield?
Yes.
I can probably bring you up to speed on that.
All right.
The committee has met. The committee has recommended a location. The location would be, what's the area out there? Woodland Park and a letter, let me be correct on this. Has been sent to Senator Deeds, who is in the process of supposedly, and I will call him tomorrow. Getting a meeting with, uh, the Department of Highways in Charleston. We've asked not to eat meat with the district engineer, the land procurement person. To transfer or authorize the, the memorial to be built there. On that location. So it's on hold simply because of that, you know, getting that property. And if you recall, uh. Delicate Prip gave two thousand, was it two thousand, two thousand dollars for construction of that. Also, a design has been reviewed. Uh, Mr. Bragg provided, uh, uh, schematics, maps of the area. And we're just waiting to, to go to Charleston to see if they will give, transfer the property to the city. And the only thing I would say at this point is if anyone, council member, manager, day day. Anyone in the community would have another suggested site as an option in the event this doesn't happen. Uh, please let you or the city manager know. And as well, the Joneses have been contacted for the second time to see if they would reconsider. Cause that was the first choice down on the corner. So if that answered your questions, Mayor, and the only reason I'm responding on that, I'm on that committee.
All right, I think.
Ex officio ad hoc.
I think that answers it quite well. As to, you can scratch that meeting then. Which now, I, I also would urge that the city, uh, uh, bring back to life the recreation committee. I think it's been lying dormant for such a long time that it needs to be back out there. Uh, doing some things that they would want to do, but there's been no organization, no meeting. So, uh, if that could be called and get that, that recreation committee up and going. It'd be, I think, quite useful to the city, especially now that summer is approaching. And the community garden, I'll throw that out to you again, if there's any progress on. And the community garden, I'll throw that out to you again, if there's any progress on that, or if it's. Okay, thank you. That's all, that's all I have. And now, any future agenda items, folks?
All right, editorial, I'd just like to commend Day Day on the many, many projects that I see he has started, completed, that the city manager agreed, authorized, or assisted with. Virginia Street, uh, we, we talked for years here, or ever since I've been on council about the flooding situation out on East Main Street by Ellison's. He has dealt with that. I was told by the manager of means that it has taken care of the drainage problem. And if you recall, we were told by a former city manager that Department of Highways had to do that. So again, I commend, uh, Day Day, Mr. Kirk, on what I see happening through his, uh, through his supervision, management, so forth, and, and his men as well. He's done phenomenal in terms of number of projects that have been on the table ever since I've been on council. He's taken care of them through the city manager himself, so accolades to you, my man.
With no other. With no other business before the city council of Oak Hill for April tenth, our next meeting will be May eighth, two thousand twenty-three at five thirty in these chambers. And with that, I declare the meeting adjourned.